All right, well, I want to welcome everyone to the meeting of the Finance Efficiency, Economy and Sustainability Subcommittee. We had so much fun yesterday, we thought we'd do another meeting today. So today's is, while yesterday's was just on one topic, healthcare costs at the city of Phoenix, we have a broad agenda today, and we will begin this meeting like we begin every meeting of this Subcommittee with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Noakowski, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Oh, absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilman. The minutes from the February 18th meeting have been provided to all my colleagues. Do we have any changes, corrections, or a motion?
Motion approved.
A second?
A motion approved in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Items three through six are for information only. All the members of the Subcommittee have been provided background information on them. Any questions that my colleagues have at this time? All right, well, then that is going to move us up to item seven, and item seven is a consent item right now, so do I have any questions or comments from my colleagues on this, or if not, we would entertain a motion?
Motion approved.
Second?
Motion approved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, so now that takes us on to item eight, which is the Phoenix IDA 2015 Public Finance Plan. Mr. Blue?
Mr. Chair, members of the Subcommittee, I am joined by John Silgato, Executive Director of the Phoenix IDA, and we're here today to talk with you both about what the IDA does and it's, how it's empowered, both by the Council and by state law, what have been recent outcomes of the efforts of the IDA, and the IDA's proposal for its actions and activities going forward in the next year or two. And so with that, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Silgato.
Thank you, Mr. Blue. If I press this right. Councilman Gates, members of the Committee, good morning, and thank you for having us. Paul pretty much stole my introduction, so I'll get to the meat of this. The purpose really today, as Paul had mentioned, is to come to seek some direction from you on particularly focusing on three things. Our public finance plan for 2015, which are the bonds that we've issued. We thank you for the support that we've had from the Council over the last few years, I think, as I mentioned to Councilman Gates recently. We're very proud of our record that all the transactions, with the exception of one, have received unanimous support from Council, so we're very grateful for that. So we're interested in getting some of your comments in terms of our business plan, and we'll talk about that later. The other two items that we're seeking some direction and some comments from you relate to our Community Impact Fund, which are investments that we make back in the city. And the last one, which is very important to us, is our Community Development Fund, which are awards or equity investments that we've made to local groups, and in some cases, participation, you know, with the city to leverage our funds. So with that, we start our slide usually with our mission statement, and then I'll read it real quickly, and it's to provide community and economic benefits to Phoenix residents through bond financing and other community investments. This is really the heart of our business plan. We live and we breathe this mission statement, so everything that we do really drives, at the end of the day, the things that we're working on. To begin with, I want to talk a little bit about our sources of revenue. One thing that is very important that we tell folks is that we do not receive any money from the general fund. We do not receive any sources of federal or taxpayer money to support the organization. Everything that we use to operate, our programs are driven by the fees that we generate in the transaction. We're self-sufficient, have been self-sufficient since the IDA was created in 81. For 2015, our budget was a little over 1.9 million. The fees that we receive from bond transaction roughly represent about 43% of our revenue source. If I may move on. The, a large discussion over the time gets back to the types of bonds or business that we're involved with, and in reality for us is that everything that we do in regards to the bonds that you have before you to approve the proceedings are driven by market conditions. And so typically for us, under the ID Act of 1968, there are 17 projects that we work within, and if those projects do not qualify within that, then we can't issue the bonds. But in all reality, for the market to work, which has been working for us, is the interest rate environment. Right now, the tax-exempt market has been good, it's been averaging between 5% to 7%, a little lower than the taxable market. Access to capital, I think as we've discussed before, we are a conduit issuer, we don't have money to lend, and so in reality, all we are is that issuer that brings together a borrower and a lender, which are bondholders, so they're the ones that are investing the money into the projects. You've seen a lot of charter schools come before you over the last year or so, but the market has been great for educational bonds, and so that's why we've been working on that. And last, and part of the consideration is that all these projects that are tax-exempt have to comply with the federal tax code. If they don't, then they can't be issued as tax-exempt. And one thing that I want to make certain is that any of the tax-exempt bonds that we're involved with, particularly with the nonprofits, none of the proceeds from the bonds go to support any for-profit activities. So those are our market conditions. The use of earnings, our fees are, primarily cover three important elements, which I'll talk about today. One is the operating expenses, the second is our Community Development Fund, and third is our Community Impact Fund. If I may talk a little bit about our operating expenses. Currently, as I had mentioned, our operating expenses are a little under $2 million. Personnel, which is staff, represents about 41% of our annual budget. The IDA has six full-time people that work in the organization. I serve as the Executive Director, but technically I'm a city employee. So when I was asked to serve on the IDA, at the end of 2008, there was an agreement done with the city of Phoenix and the IDA to essentially place me in their kind of work-order relationship, and so the IDA reimburses the city all my salary and benefits to provide that service. And the only condition at that time from the Board of Directors was that I serve in a full-time capacity, which I have been since I joined the organization. And over the course of that time, we've expanded and have added staff, so we have five professionals that are now part of the organization, but those individuals are employees of the IDA. They're not city employees, so those individuals are paid through the IDA proceeds, which includes salary benefits that were approved under the personnel policies of the organization. The balance of that is generally administrative. 43% of the balance of the budget is our investment into the Community Development Fund, which we'll talk a little bit about in a couple of minutes. Moving on to the Community Development Fund, this is a fund, and I'm seeking some feedback and direction from you, and I'm going to talk a little bit about why it was created and essentially kind of what we've done these last couple of years. The Community Development Fund was created in about 2011. It was created partly to support the fees that we were generating from non-Arizona projects, and so that fund, because of our activity over the last few years, has grown significantly. In 2014 and 15, and through mid-April 2015, I want to talk about the areas that we've supported here for a minute. The Board has carefully, as they talked about, what was important for them, was to look at the three areas that were important. They expressed importance in supporting this. One was education. In education, the areas that are supported are early literacy, STEM education, teacher training development, and with that, the last couple of years, we've invested $266,000. Economic development was the other area. Under the economic development category, those areas that we've supported are either related to job training, financial education, entrepreneurship, and small business. And the last is healthcare, and that focuses on healthcare and facilities, local healthcare issues, preventive awareness, and healthcare workforce, which we've invested $50,000. And the last is a new one. We were asked recently by the United Way to support an effort that was an issue occurring in our community, as you know, with the issues of closing down the Men's Overflow Shelter, came back with the solution to create a rapid rehab housing program to house 250 people that were involved in the, well, involved in the, were cause of what's happened in terms of what they're trying to do with folks and place them in housing. And so we were asked to contribute $1 million, and so our Board took action this, earlier last week, and so we've, Board has approved to invest, you know, $1 million as part of the $2.5 million budget, and so...
And Juan, just a question on that. Specifically, how's that money being used then? Is that covering, like, rental payments, or how's the million dollars being used?
Yes, thank you for the question, Councilman, and members of the Committee. That money, the $2.5 million, will be used to essentially transition 250 men and women into apartment housing throughout Maricopa County. The money will be used to support rent payments for a period of time, and then the rest of it is based for social service support that they'll get, and a portion of that will be assuming that folks will find apartments that need furniture, and there's about $1,000 or so outreach that they'll use in that program. This is a program, as I understand, the city has been working for some months, had great success in terms of high retention in terms of the folks that are going in there. So that'll put 250 people into housing here over the next six months.
Well, I just really want to thank the IDA for stepping up on this. Obviously, this is a, I hesitate to use the word crisis, but a very serious situation, and IDA stepping up is so important, and it's great to see that you've used these funds that have been generated by doing these projects outside, not only the city of Phoenix, but outside the state of Arizona. But in the end, these fees are being used to address a very, very important issue within our community, so thank you, and thanks to the Board as well.
Mr. Chair, I would just add in there, I think it's also a great example of how the IDAs can be supportive of the city's policy goals, and the connection with the county has been really important in here too, so that both those organizations have worked closely together. I just, I think it's a, it's a perfect example of what the IDA, the resources generated by the IDA, supporting the goals of the community and the Council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Gates. The one thing too, that I think is very critical, and I always mention, is that if the Council did not support our initiative, particularly to support projects outside Arizona, we would not have the funds to do the things that we're doing there. And I think early on, when our Board of Directors decided to invest or expand our services outside the neighborhood, it was important for us to determine why and the public benefit, and our Board determined that the work that we're doing outside would bring in money into this community. So this is what we're doing in the Community Development Fund. Any thoughts in terms of the categories that we have here? Any thought of the categories that we have, education, economic development? Are we good with it?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, then I'll proceed. The next category is our Community Impact Fund. The assets of the IDA, particularly the cash, follow the same principles as the city in that our investment policy calls that, under no circumstances are our funds to be placed at risk. So the cash that we currently have is placed in secure investments where we don't essentially impact the principal. So in some cases, the basis points that we're getting in today's environment are very low, but the principal is secure. About three years ago, the Board decided to take $5 million from our administrative fund and create the Community Impact Fund. The investment policy for the Community Impact Fund changed a little bit in that, at that point, it was not focused on the safety of principal, it was really focused on investment. And so we deemed at that point that we wanted to use $5 million to essentially invest back in the community with the intent that our principal would come back at some particular time. And within the framework of that, the core of that investment policy is really to support projects in Phoenix with no more than a seven-year return. So when I come forward to the Board and bring suggestions or examples of what it is that they're interested in doing, we have to talk about the criteria in terms of how we get our money back. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the programs we've been involved with. Under the Phoenix IDA Loan Fund, you see the $1.4 million money that we have funded. These are projects that have been leveraged with other organizations and participations. Our portion of that has been 1.4, and as of February 2015, the outstanding balance of that is $342,000. The programs that are under that are a pre-development loan fund, specifically focusing on nonprofits. The Arizona Community Foundation joined us in establishing a $1.5 million fund to focus on pre-development loans for education, so they're a partner with us in that capacity. The other are direct loans to individuals. Two years ago, this city's funds in the expanded area had dried up, and so we stepped in during that period and provided funding under the expand program. And the last program involved under this is a loan participation. We have been involved with other nonprofit community development finance agencies where they have a large financing that we buy a participation. That's something that we like to do, so if the transaction is half a million dollars, then we'll come in at $350,000, and we'll usually split that to create bigger impact and leverage in the community. The last item, the land, we have $3.1 million invested in land, and that land is really developed and has been acquired in participation with the city. This includes three transactions that we've been involved with. Our first one was a small lot behind the opera that we participated and joined the city, and the last two significant investments that we've made have been in purchasing and acquiring land in the West Fillmore Project. And so we did those in participation with the city. So we work closely with community economic development in identifying areas that we can come together and, and work on identifying resources ours, and we can make the biggest impact. So we'll continue to work with, with economic development and housing and other city departments as we continue to deal with that. Now, the process currently really is when loan funds, if individuals come in and they're interested in securing nonprofits, we go through an application process, and then they reach out for us. On the land, it's really those have been purely working with, with city departments. And so as we move forward, we'll continue to work with city departments in this area. The, the, next to the last item has to do with our public finance plan, and these are, the public finance, again, is focusing on the bonds that the Council has the opportunity to make some comments. And there are three areas that we focus on, transactions that we look at. One is to create or retain jobs. As you know, the facilities that come before you mostly are building, constructing jobs, and so therefore, you've got temporary jobs and long-term jobs. And we're supporting local Arizona investments and also jobs. Most of the contractors that are involved with that are local firms. And then at the end is to boost the local economy through job creation and building also that sales tax base. The next items, I'll talk a little bit about our plan for 2015, and would like some comments or some direction from you in terms of your thought. And these are areas that we're planning to pursue in kind of the order of our priority. And the first is healthcare, then community economic development, and last but not least is our education. In the healthcare, we have been targeting assisted living facilities. A few months ago, you had the opportunity and supported a project in Yuma that will open in May, and the significance about that unit, it's about 130 beds, but it'll be the first assisted living facility that's targeting veterans with Alzheimer's and dementia. So that particular model is looked at being replicated. The Board will consider, at the May meeting, a similar assisted facility in the Deer Valley area, which, assuming if all goes well, you have the opportunity to, to take a look at that, at that project. So we're continuing to figure out a way to continue to work with assisted living facilities and other healthcare providers. A huge investment or project we're involved with, as you recall, is the Mayo Clinic, and then also, we're continuing to seek opportunities with regional centers, organizations like Mountain Park Ranch that are expanding, and I think, as you folks know, with the, with the healthcare reform, going to smaller groups, and a lot of them are 501(c)(3), and so we'll continue to work with them. This last year, we're, last couple of years, we're involved in assisting Vidales Hall in their expansion of their behavioral centers. So we'll continue to seek those areas. Hospitals are one that we've been making a strong effort to pursue. There are 501(c)(3) organizations, 501(c)(3) organizations, and so we've not secured one yet, but are coming close, so hopefully we'll get an opportunity to present something to you in our, this coming year. The next item is our community economic development. Multifamily housing was a big market for the IDA a few years ago, but as I had mentioned, everything is driven by market opportunities. Over the last couple of years, we've been involved in two multifamily projects. We're starting to see a lot more activity, so hopefully that will start to pick up in the near future. Manufacturing has been one that's been difficult because of the limitations that are within the federal tax code, but we're, we're going to work closely with CED to see if we can develop a bank. We were approached by Alliance Bank, and they're interested in creating some kind of prototype that will target a market in the $8 to $11 million range, so hopefully sometime in the near future, you'll see one of our, our first local small manufacturing facilities. I think the last two times, the last two manufacturing facilities that we're involved with was the Dunn Edwards Plant a couple of years ago, and the WL Gore expansion. And on the community development, most recently, we're involved with the financing of the Girl Scouts, expanding their learning center in South Mountain. The Elko Convention Center was one that we're very excited about, because it's the first time we've been involved in expanding that. And so as we move forward, we plan to spend more time with CED in identifying potential projects that we can get involved in supporting through bond issuance. The last is education. And the reason I kind of list this one as last is that really, we've had a great deal of success, as you know, with education, and so the, one particular area that we're spending some time on is district schools. I think you know, as a concern that came up recently about our involvement with charters, we've been involved in two district financings, and in fact, the only one where an IDA was involved with, with Higley about two years ago, and since then, we've been trying to figure out the model. It's a tough model because obviously, you know, district schools can issue their own general obligation bonds, they're going to be priced better than what charters get, but in some cases, as existed with Higley, they had some capacity in terms of what they could issue, and so they turned to the IDA. So over the last six months, we've been successful in developing a framework of a financial structure, and we're currently working with three school districts that are interested in this model. And this model will allow them another opportunity to seek expansion in their facilities. So hopefully, within the next six months or so, we'll be, we'll be in front of you to present one of the first, another district school financing. On higher education, we'll continue to...
Yeah, a question from Councilman Waring.
So for one of the last go-arounds, and I felt bad I missed the council meeting, I had a health, health emergency in my family at the last minute. So we had heard, I think others had as well, I'll speak for you guys, but I think Councilman Gates particularly, had heard from people who were public school district advocates, whether, I know I heard from school board members and so forth, in areas like Cape Creek, and I think Paradise Valley had also weighed in with you, we sort of shared that one. You know, I think they were concerned that what we were doing, I think the bottom line of their concerns was it would somehow negatively impact the public schools. Can you just address that? I know you had some meetings and everything, and I've talked to some of those folks subsequent. I think they have a better understanding, but obviously, you didn't talk to every single person who was interested in the subject, so here's another opportunity. Can you just explain real quick what the issue was?
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, there was a, I think the biggest misinformation I do that we're involved in giving away tax-free money, and that's not the case, these are tax-exempt bonds, same bonds that, that public schools have. And so the other part of it was that it was a concern that these were private entities receiving money. And so the reality is that these are, the applicants that come before is our 501(c)(3) corporations, they are corporations, but they're public entities. The one thing that I make clear is that no public money goes to support any for-profit entities. And so we talked about the role that we're a conduit issuer, and our role in terms of just being the facilitator, and that these folks were getting loans, like anything else. And so once folks understood the concept that schools were just borrowing money to expand their facilities, that, that included interest in some point in time, well, they were going to continue to pay those loans back. And so once they understood that model clearer, then I think folks felt a little better. And so I think the, the conversations that we had over the last two weeks, and still continued, in fact, we just had one yesterday, really involved in, are there avenues that the IDA can help us in our facilities? And so I will say that, as a result of the tsunami, I guess, that occurred during that time, because a lot of folks were, you know, upset, obviously, with what's going on at the legislature, and are concerned about that, it's created an opportunity for us to meet with districts and talk a little bit about what it is that we do. And so as a result of that, and I think during that two-week period, we met with a lot of the leadership, as well as several districts, and answered questions that they had, and I think mostly received positive feedback from, from those visits.
I did.
And so we're, we're going to continue to reach out to them and see if we can assist them, not only with the expansion, but also talk to them about some of the Community Development Fund programs that we're involved with, and so consider, you know, encourage them to apply for, for those programs. And so I think we're good at this point, and I think for us is to continue to focus on, on figuring out what we can do with, with district schools.
I mean, I think, I think you're absolutely right, you know, Mr. Chairman. It happened right about the time the state legislature was talking about doing some things with the budget and so forth, the districts may not have approved of, but that seemed to put the focus on this, like they were intertwined...
Yes.
...operations, and that somehow money was being diverted, and that's why there were cuts at the state legislature, at least, that's how I'm interpreting what I was hearing. Obviously knew that wasn't really the case, but I appreciate you taking the time to reach out to the districts and so forth. I have had positive feedback about that as recently as Friday, so I appreciate that very much. I'm sorry I wasn't there to have this discussion at the full council meeting. I think it's important to note, you know, trying to help schools, of all stripes, is a good thing. It doesn't necessarily hurt public schools, I'm a product of public schools, my parents are public school teachers, my aunt was a public school teacher, so I know a little bit wherever I speak on that issue. Can, can, so can, to go back to something that you said earlier, and I, sorry, I probably should have interjected at that point, can public schools, they can set up charters, correct? I think, is that a recent, I think there's been some discussion about that?
The legislature recently changed policy where...
Since my time at the legislature.
Where there was a district-sponsored charter schools, that, that no longer is allowed.
Okay.
So...
So it was allowed, and now it's not?
It's not.
So, Mr. Chairman, and Councilman Waring, this is indeed at the thrust of the problem in working with public schools, is we need to find an avenue that makes sense for them financially.
Right.
Juan and his team, and with outside counsel and bond counsel are working through, how can we create real benefit that is, that has utility for the public school districts?
That's exactly what I was getting at, is it possible for the public schools to benefit as well? It sounds like, maybe it was at one time, and now it's not, this has all been, I know it's been in flux a lot of years.
Well, I think it's all, with, because I think that's actually a whole longer policy discussion with the Council to explain this, and I think what Juan's describing is, we're currently trying to find, and he has found, a few school districts to, you have to actually engage with the people who need the financing to understand if, if what the IDA can do, what the laws, limitations are, and the needs of the school districts can co-join in a manner that creates a win-win. And so they're working through that process. We have some hope that there's an opportunity, more to come, back to the Council and discuss with you in the future. with you in the future. We probably don't have enough details right now with certainty to tell you we can or cannot. We think there is hope, and we're pursuing that hope.
So I guess if I was to summarize, you know, to the people who called me, like I said, they're on school boards and so forth, so you may or not, may not have spoken to them directly, but hopefully, the message got through. From what Paul just said, what Juan just said, I guess I'm interpreting it that this could possibly help you, we're still investigating, we're going to try to find some ways to have it be beneficial to you, but regardless, it's not harmful. Is that a fair statement?
That is fair.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to follow up on Councilman Waring's points, which were right on, Juan, I wanted to thank you for personally having met with Washington Elementary School District, Glendale Union High School District, Madison Elementary, and Scottsdale Union, I think as recently as yesterday, to address these issues. And I know it was a difficult time, and there was a lot of misinformation, but I appreciate how you kind of embraced the opportunity to educate people about what we're doing and what we're not doing. And, you know, that's very important, and I think you used the term tsunami. It was a unfortunate timing of a lot of different events, but that's why I think it's great to have this opportunity to, again, continue to clear up some of these misconceptions today about what you are doing.
Can I say one more?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just, for the activists who contacted us, too, that was the right thing to do.
Yes.
We appreciate it. I just, I hate that word, not for using it, but the misinformation or whatever, it's better to call and ask and have these discussions, and maybe we find a pathway to victory, or some other way to phrase it. You know, you guys find a way to work with them. So I'm glad people call, I guess, to still straight, rather than just be unhappy. I'm glad that people contacted us, you were able to have the meetings. I think there's a lot better understanding out there. Certainly, as you said, thank you again, because the feedback was pretty good, and it seemed like the word spread. This is just another opportunity to reiterate that point to folks who are interested. But, yeah, I think it was good that people contacted us, and for my part, I'm glad that they did.
Me, too. All right, please continue.
Yeah, I'll move quickly here. The last two items in our education, obviously, higher education, and to continue to pursue opportunities with both public and private schools to, as they are expanding their facilities. And the last is charter schools. We've spent a lot of time developing the business, as you know, with the projects you've seen before you, we have become the choice of most schools, and it really hasn't, it's been because of the service we provide. The reality, too, is that they are interested in coming to the city of Phoenix, because obviously, the reputation that the city of Phoenix has in the marketplace.
Mr. Chair, members of the subcommittee, as Juan is moving to some of his next programs, I do want to talk with you just briefly about some encouragement I have given the IDA board, and they have been very receptive to the notion that you've seen Juan list in a whole set of items in priority order, and that isn't by accident, it's about what are the affirmative actions, what are the, some have asked, what's the opportunity cost by doing these transactions? What Juan is representing is, the amount of energy we're going to spend starts at the beginning of that list and works its way down in terms of marketing outward to entities. There is absolutely a recognition of market demand and market realities, and so we also want to be clear, at least where the IDA board is coming from currently, is they will also still yet respond to those deals that the market walks through the door and brings to them. And so I want to, and I think that's an area that is important, to get your feedback and advice, we are not, at least absent getting other direction from the city council. The IDA is not turning business away, but they are absolutely describing their priority order, where they're going to affirmatively go out into the marketplace and try and bring transactions and see if there's a match. Their attempt to go work for a match is, their affirmative effort starts at the beginning of that list, in the economic development arena, in the making jobs, in the working in healthcare, and that education isn't, again, in priority order. We are working district schools to actively figure out how to do work with them. We're still going to respond if a charter school comes through the door. There isn't, at this point, a need to actively go pursue the charter school market. They know where we are, and when they have a need, they will come find us. And this is an area where we want to make sure we get any feedback, advice, or input from the subcommittee of a differing direction to pursue.
Any, maybe any thoughts from my colleagues on that point? I think that makes sense. I guess the one caveat I would say is that, and this is how I heard it is, but we, the IDA is open to all good projects, and that this should not be interpreted as we are not looking at charter schools anymore, but simply that the marketing efforts have been accomplished in that area. IDA is well-known as a good partner on the charter school projects, and that we're going to make sure that we're focusing on expanding our bandwidth, not that we didn't have it before, but just, I guess, trumpeting our bandwidth goes beyond charter schools. So to that extent, I would be in agreement with that approach.
Thank you. If I may move quickly to the last two programs.
Counselor Valenzuela. I think you worded it very well, and I, you know, I appreciate the, I appreciate all of the effort to clear up some of the, some of it is misinformation, and some of it is, but I'm glad that we've had the discussion. I, you know, Juan, how much respect I have for you, and for all of your board members, and for the great work that the IDA has been doing for the city of Phoenix and our economy. I'm glad that we've had the discussion, frankly, because it's going to help us concentrate more on what can be done with districts. But frankly, we all have to remember what the Phoenix IDA is, and it was articulated very well in the last council meeting, you know, it just so happens to be that charter schools, you know, that's, they're in the market right now, you know, and the IDA should be looking at all of those opportunities, but certainly, you know, and that's another blessing in disguise, I think, because a lot of people don't realize what the IDA is, and the benefit, and just how diversified you've been. So I mean, I'll go ahead and continue, let you continue your presentation, I'll have more later, but I'm also appreciative.
Great. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you for your kind words. Moving quickly, the last two programs, I think are significant for us, and that has to do with our homeownership programs. One is the Home in Five, and the second is the Mortgage Credit Certificate. The Home in Five is a down payment assistance program that's targeted, that's targeted for modern low-income households. People that, folks that participate in this program are eligible for a 5% down payment assistance grant, or if you're a veteran, 6%. Over the years, the IDA has been known for its first-time homebuyer programs, and we haven't done one, and hadn't been involved in one, probably for the last six years. And the reality of that is, based on the conversation we've been having today, there is no market for bond, revenue bonds for single-family products. So in participation with Raymond James, the underwriter, we're involved in creating a product that made sense for investors to purchase. And so in September of 2010, in participation with our good partner, the Maricopa County IDA, we created the Home in Five program. And so some things that I want to mention, highlights at where we are, and quite honestly, I consider myself a single-family person, and I was a little concerned whether this program would work or not, but we've had tremendous success with the program. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the highlights. We have over 80 active lenders that are participating in the program. I think we have over 95 that have signed up, but 80 that are active, so folks have a lot of choices in who to approach. As of March 2015, we have helped over 4,600 families throughout Maricopa County acquire homes through the, our Down Payment Assistance Program. Out of that number, 159 loans have gone to veterans, which is approximately 3.39%. This program has been a huge success. These are FHA loan products, and the last time we looked, we're well over 25, about close to 25% of the market share for FHA loans. That's huge for a program that just started up. So we're back in the homeownership business in a great way, and we're happy to do this in participation with our partner at the Maricopa County IDA. So by the way, today's current rate is 4.375 with 5% of down payment assistance. And I think as I visited with all of you, and as we go out into the districts, we're always trying to promote this program, particularly with the lenders that are in your local communities. The last program that I want to talk about is our Mortgage Credit Certificate program. This program came up in a, I guess, in a statement or conversation that Councilman Pastor made, and asked if that was something that we could do. So, again, because the market, the market is a little bit better, and so this is a program that we had to give volume cap from the state, and so we pursued it, the board is okayed. And so beginning in June 2015, we will offer the Mortgage Credit Certificate program to first-time homebuyers throughout the city of Phoenix. Maricopa County IDA is considering whether they'll participate or not, they may join this letter later, but the significance of this program is it provides first-time homebuyers 25% mortgage interest on a federal tax credit. So for most folks, it's going to be a savings of anywhere from $4,000 to $5,000 in taxes during the first five years. This program can be used with our Home in Five. So we have great plans for this, and we're very excited that we continue to expand our single-family program. So in closing, Councilman Gates and members of the committee, we again want to thank you for your interest in hearing this today. We consider ourselves to be, and are interested in being a good partner with the city of Phoenix, and as our mission statement stated earlier, we want to make sure all our programs provide benefit to our local residents, so everything we get geared provides more economic resources to our community. So thank you very much.
And, Mr. Chair, members of the subcommittee, if I could just make one brief comment as well, the IDA has done an excellent process, as they talk about the investing of their proceeds with the community. I know there was just recently some activity up in Sunny Slope of participation in the community, and so they have an excellent application process, a review process, it's a subcommittee of the board that does great work. One of the areas I have asked the IDA board to consider is ways to expand the marketing and knowledge of the community at large about what those opportunities might be. They're going to be, because of some, the recent investment, particularly with the Valley of the Sun United Way, there's going to be some limited opportunities, but I thought now is a good time to keep considering, how do we communicate to people that there are opportunities, so that the broader community knows that they're available, and that there is some episodic time period by which we communicate these opportunities? And then second, as we move through the selection, they've done an excellent process, I think fair, equitable, transparent, but there's always, at the city, there's always opportunities, we believe, to improve, grow, and change. And so there are some other suggestions I've made about getting others involved, like the Community Foundation, helping us make sure we have the broadest look at the selection processes that we come and implement. More to come in that, the board is taking that into consideration. We may be back and tell you that story at some future point. Thank you very much.
And, you know, thank you, and I did want to add to, a word of thanks to your board, Juan. You have a very talented board, and they do great work, and I know they're great partners with you throughout, so even though they're not here today, we really do appreciate all the hard work that they do, and do a great job with the IDA.
What's that?
Don, except for Don, Q, of course, is here, my apologies.
I'm the invisible man.
So, Don, so, Don, if you can pass on to your colleagues how much we appreciate the great work that you and the rest of the talented group do. We do have a one-speaker card, maybe we could take that and then open it up to additional questions or comments from my colleagues. We have Greta Rogers.
Good morning, Chairman Gates and members of the committee. This is a fabulous program, and it has been brought to active, productive life under the leadership of Juan Salgado, and with assistance and support from Paul Blue, two very able, intelligent, objective, business-oriented gentlemen. I would like to suggest that we put this presentation on the September or October formal agenda for a full presentation, so that members of the public who watch it on TV and/or who come to the meeting have a full understanding about this. I think that's the best way to get the widest communication possible for it. It's an invaluable program, and we had it before Juan came to the city to direct it, but it was moribund. It just did nothing. One of the things in this process that I'm concerned about, and I know you all are, too, the homeless no longer have a shelter, if you can call that thing down there at Mass and the 13th, a shelter. I mean, it was atrocious, and we've all seen what hangs around. I hope we can maybe use IDA funds for this purpose, for a large multifamily housing in this area of the city, where these people are accustomed and familiar and comfortable being, and with their friends and/or associations that they've made, so that it is a humane, we show our humanity to them, and they have a humane, safe, comfortable area in which to live and home. That's what I think is most important right now, and we should address that with alacrity. Thank you.
Thank you, Greta. All right, that's the only card we have on this item. Questions, comments for my colleagues? Councilman Noakowski.
That's fine. I was just going to say, I think it's a good idea to have the presentation.
I would agree.
None of us actually piped up, so I figured...
Yes. No, thank you very much for that, and I think we can, you know, chat with the mayor's office and see if there'd be an interest in doing that. Thank you. Councilman Noakowski.
You know, Juan, I just really want to thank you and your board. Sometimes you don't tell your story, and it's really important that we go out there and we tell the IDA's story. A lot of times, we get caught up in controversial issues like charter schools, but what you do, I mean, it's just amazing, what I see within my own district, from new businesses benefiting from it, to even land banking in downtown Phoenix, making sure that we get the right type of construction, buildings, housing, or whatever we need in downtown Phoenix, that we, as a city, have a tool to secure that property, so we make sure that the right developer or the right project is built in that area. And we're not using any of our general funds, and you're creating your own fund, and you're self-supported. So, you know, it's just amazing, and all the families, I mean, that home ownership program where you have the down payments, I mean, a lot of times, these new families, they never had a home before, they've rented all their lives, they need that opportunity, and what the IDA does is gives them that opportunity to own their own home. And once they own their own home here in Phoenix, I mean, then they become a part of this community, and they take pride in that neighborhood. So I really want to thank you, and to have 80 active lenders, that's incredible. I mean, people have a choice, they don't have to just go to a handful of lenders, but you have 80. I mean, that's just unheard of, and I just want to really thank you for all that hard work, and having close to 40, over 4,600 mortgages and loans, I mean, that's great. So I think that's the kind of stories, and that's what we need to hear, my colleagues and myself, and I agree with Mrs. Rogers, is that we really need to have a work study where we can actually look at, and you need to bring in pictures, and all the nonprofit organizations that you helped along the way. I know that the Caesar Todd Foundation, we have four senior centers, and we benefited from that little gap money. Sometimes you need that little hump or that little gap money to make sure that that project goes through. So, you know, those four senior centers that we have were really possible because of that extra little gap money that we were able to attain by you, and they'll pay you back later on, and it's those extras that really make these projects in Phoenix, and great projects happen. So, once again, I want to really thank you, and thank you for reaching out and letting us know what the IDA is all about.
Thank you, Councilman. Other comments, questions? Councilman Valenzuela.
Yeah, I just, I also want to thank you, Juan, again, and your board. Thank you for the presentation. I look forward to further presentations, again, on the education issue. I want to thank you for, you know, let me back up, I remember when I was vying for this opportunity, this responsibility, and I would talk about the importance of education, and many times, people would say, well, education is not in the purview of city council, which is crazy to me. is crazy to me. And I would speak up, and I would say, absolutely, it is. It's in our purview. It's our response, it's all of our responsibility. And we've had things like Read On Phoenix, which I've had an opportunity to help launch with the mayor. You know, we have SROs in schools, we have after-school programs, we need more of those. Up the list goes on and on, where the city of Phoenix is able to work to help educate our community. And it would be unfair to criticize an organization like yours who has an opportunity to enhance education. So, thank you for doing that, and thank you for also, I want to thank you a lot, you know, thank you for looking for ways to also help the public school districts. Speaking as a product of the public school system, as someone who attended 13 public schools, believe me, we need all the help we can get, especially when you see some of the cuts that have been made with the state's budget. So, thank you for continuing those efforts. We have been working really hard on helping to improve our economy, and I believe that the foundation of economic development is at that entrepreneurial space, in that entrepreneurial space. And I know we have a presentation coming up that will touch on that, but I want to thank the Phoenix IDA because you were playing in that space as well. We have one of our coworking spaces, one of our more established coworking spaces that is continuing to thrive, businesses continue to thrive because of what the Phoenix IDA has been able to do when you stepped up recently. So, thank you for that as well, and look forward to many more success stories as you move forward.
Thank you for your comments, Councilman. Now, it's my understanding that in the recent legislative session, there was a bill that was passed that expands the ability of industrial development authorities around the state to engage in, you know, projects. Could you just talk briefly about that and what implications that might have for the Phoenix IDA?
Sure. Councilman Gates and members of the committee, thank you for the question. The IDA has introduced a bill this year to expand our ability to issue more bonds in regards to commercial and retail sites. In the current act, we were prohibited from doing anything that was outside of redevelopment areas. So, the redevelopment area aspect of it was removed. So, we're working closely with some of our partners to start developing product that we can reach out to more commercial facilities, retail facilities, that are now able to take advantage of bond financing. And in particular, our target will be small business lending, where we can perhaps bundle some of those loans, similar to the concept that we have with Home &amp; Five, and get various banks involved that we're able to pull and then sell to the capital markets.
Well, thank you for pushing that effort forward. Please, that was passed by the legislature and signed by the governor.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
So, it will be one more tool in the toolbox. And for those of us, I know all of us on the council have been very much focused on some of the retail space that is vacant in our districts. It might be a great opportunity to continue to address that. So, thank you very much for your work on that. Any other questions? This is just an information item, but very informative, and thank you for your time and your efforts. And yeah, it would be great if the full council could have the benefit of this presentation as well. Thank you very much. That takes us now to item number nine, which is the update on citywide collection efforts and request change to cost recovery. We have city CFO Neil Young with us today. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Members of the subcommittee, thank you for seeing us this morning. We're going to give you an update on our collection efforts and also ask for an expansion of our tools to help collect more revenue for the city. With me today is Sandy Schilling. She is the deputy director over the Tax Division and has really done a remarkable job in starting to consolidate the city's collection efforts and really expand the use of our existing tools. We're already starting to, we're starting to see a lot of benefit from those things, and we expect a lot more of that in the future. This item is for action. We are seeking the subcommittee's recommendation to council to amend city ordinances to allow for the recovery of the cost of collections, including lien costs and third-party collection agency costs. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Sandra.
Thank you, Neil. Good morning. I'm going to start this morning by talking about the current collections tools that we have in place. As customers become delinquent, one of the first things that happens in our automated systems is they receive past due letters and statements. This, of course, generates calls to our on-staff collection agency, or collection staff that can set up payment plans, take payments, or talk to the customers about some kind of dispute that they may have. Another tool that we have is our outbound calling contract. As delinquent customers do not respond, we can send these accounts to the vendor who will make automated calls to these customers, leaving them a message and giving them the contact information to call us back. Again, this generates calls to our staff also. The next item that we have to protect the city's interest is liens. For the liens that we file, up to $10,000, there's a $78 fee. If the lien is over $10,000, the charge is $302. We've also started the use of the debt set-off program, which is a program at the state level that was started in 2011, and this allows any political subdivision to submit claims against any taxpayer refunds that are being held by DOR. Next on our list is the final demand letters. The final demand letters are sent out to give the taxpayer 10 days' notice that their account's going to be sent to a collection agency. In the past three weeks, we've started this final demand process in the Finance Department. We sent out over 2,900 accounts just recently worth $3.7 million, and as of this morning, we've received half a million dollars back from this effort.
And so, sorry, so those demand letters, those are actually generated by someone here in the city?
That's correct. These are, these actual final demand letters are created by the tax mantra system. The Water Department also.
I'm sorry, the tax what?
The tax system.
Okay.
Right. The Water Department also has this process in place, and those are system-generated also by the CCMB Municipal Services Bill system. After the 10-day period, we will send the accounts to the collection agencies, and that's the process we're literally at today. Forgot to advance here. Now, I want to talk about some of the accomplishments that we've had since last year when we started this citywide collections effort. The first thing I want to talk about is the debt set-off program. As I mentioned before, the state established this program in 2011. The city of Phoenix has utilized this program since 2011, but it was sporadic. We did not maximize our efforts. In the years between 2011 and 2013, we received $115,000 back from this program. Last March, between Fire and the Finance Department, we sent over 25,000 accounts to the debt set-off program worth over $32 million. Last calendar year, in 2014, we received about $200,000 back from those efforts. So far, in 2015, because of tax season, we've received over half a million dollar in hits.
And so, just to kind of explain for our viewers, so this is, so what's, what is it a set off against?
It's a set off against taxpayer refunds, but anything that's handled by Department of Revenue.
Okay, so somebody's entitled, they're excited, hey, I can get a refund. We are getting our opportunity to get what we are owed.
Absolutely. I was going to add something else to that.
And that automatically occurs then? How does that work?
So, what happens is, we can only do this with certain types of debt, and it's because with the program, the debt has to be over $50. We have to have some kind of federal information. We either have to have a federal ID number or a person's social security number. So, the type of debt that we can send over is limited. We can send over the Fire Emergency Transportation Services debt because of insurance, we have the social security numbers. In tax, we can send them over because that's a requirement of our system. So, what happens if the debt is over $50? We have that information. We submit the, what we've done is we've automated this process, so we send this information over to the state on a monthly basis. Once the state enters that into their system, as soon as a refund hits, whether it's for an individual or for a company, any kind of refund that is due, the city will, they'll actually hold that refund at the state level, they'll send us a letter saying, we've got a hit. And a hit is exactly that. It's a refund that's being held by the state until we verify that it is truly a debt that is owed to the city. So, that $500,000 should be coming to us before the end of this fiscal year.
And then, is the money just automatically deducted, and then this taxpayer gets a smaller amount?
So, what happens is, the state will hold their refund, and they'll send them a letter saying, the city's taking your money. So, that generates a lot of phone calls, too.
I imagine it does.
So, at that point, we send them a letter saying, yes, you do owe us this money, and it's related to tax or it's related to an ambulance billing service. At that point, there's, and this is the reason for the delay, why we won't get, we don't get our money immediately, is because there's a 30-day waiting period for the customer to either come in and pay us the amount, or they can wait allotted time, and the refund will be taken out of their refund check. Sometimes we get all of it, other times we just get a portion of it, depending on how much they owe us. But they will get a reduced check that goes to them.
That's a great program.
It's an amazing program, and it's free in most cases. The only time, the only charges that we have is a $9 charge that we have to pay to the state if we tell them, oh, this customer has paid, kind of a timing difference between when we sent the account over and they owed us the money and when the refund actually hits. If that does happen, and we have to tell them to take that off of the program, there's a $9 hit. Another thing, a tool that the Finance has used for many years is the outbound, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't advance my slide, is the outbound calling contract. Finance has used this for many years, and as I said before, this generates many, many calls, folks calling in about their debt. In the spring of 2015, the Water Department has also started using this, and their call center will definitely tell you that they have received many, many additional calls because of this effort also. The existing contract is getting ready to expire, so we will be bringing forward a new contract for council approval in the next few months. Another thing that the Finance Department has worked on.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Murray.
The outbound calls are automated calls.
That's correct. These are, what we do is, I have a taxpayer that hasn't paid, so I can give the outbound calling vendor their phone numbers. They will call with an automated, pre-recorded message saying, please don't forget that you owe the city of Phoenix Tax Department X, please call at this number to get this taken care of.
So, I think it was a question I asked in briefing before this. So, someone gets the call, as you suggested, calls whatever department they're supposed to call, pays what they owe. How quickly does that list, I guess now and going forward, I assume the technology's catching up, how often does the list get purged? So, someone who's already paid is getting another call, because that leads to confusion. I just went through this on a billing thing where they had sent a letter, and I'd already paid, and da-da-da-da, and I was a little irritated to get, because it gets confusing.
Certainly. And we do have those situations. In this case, we send accounts to this vendor on a daily basis, and they will make three attempts to contact that person at each phone number and at least leave a message somewhere. So, once they call it, it's off their list. If we want them to call it again, we submit that phone number back to them.
So, it's a pretty quick process, because in my case, and it had nothing, it wasn't a city thing, I paid last month, now they're sending out an automated letter, and I'm getting, now I got to call them. I'm like, I know I paid this, I'm looking at this, but you know, you're getting this letter, you know, you're thinking, well, maybe they don't, I don't see how, they ran the car, and they've done what they need to do. That's just a kind of wasted effort.
Absolutely.
Frankly, it irritates people, it makes us look like we're not as efficient as we could be. I'm not saying the private sector is immune or doing it better. It's just, is this kind of going to be a cutting-edge, quick turnaround? The call's made, if the person calls, it's going to be purged, and that's it.
Absolutely.
Because the state's had issues with that, too. As a senator, I used to get those calls, too, which is a lot of fun. They'd have their canceled check, and they were getting a letter saying, you're going to jail if you don't pay. It leaves an impression.
Absolutely. And all of those, all of those calls end up at my office.
And they weren't scoffers, they were people who had actually paid, and then for glitz in the system, they're getting this automated stuff. In this realm, automated stuff makes me a little nervous, frankly.
And it does exist, not on the outbound calling vendors, but in normal operations because of timing differences, depending on when the customers pay and when statements are created, there is that overlap. One of the other things that we've done is we've looked at consolidating the collections efforts into one organization. We started internally with the Finance Department, and we moved the Central Accounts Receivable section into the Tax Division where my collectors live. Now, we were able to streamline processes, we were able to make sure that the processes that staff was using were standardized. It's allowed us to even focus on different collections activities, as you've seen in some of this presentation. We also have reached out to the Water Department. The Water Department houses collectors specifically for the Municipal Services Bill. Starting Monday, we're working on a plan right now to transition those employees over to the Tax Division to have one consolidated area for the city. The lien process, as it existed last year, was very monotonous, it was very time-consuming, and it was very laborious. We worked with our Technology Section to automate this process. We took a process that literally took a person hours to do and literally cut it down to minutes. Because of that effort, we were able to send over, do a cleanup effort, and send over over 1,000 accounts last year worth $6 million to get leaned. I keep forgetting my slides. Collection agencies, this is one of our, one of our big hitters here. As a part of that cleanup project, we have started to maximize the use of collection agencies. The Water Services Department has used collection agencies for many years, and the Finance Department has also on a sporadic basis. We, again, maximized that usage, got some good vendors in place. Last year, we sent, and this is related to the tax accounts, 500 high-valued accounts worth over $5 million out to the collection agencies. And we continuously do this on a more standardized process now. We're also working for, looking forward to working with the Fire Department to bring their debt out to the collection agencies also, because there's a lot that can be collected for them. As of last March, from last March until now, we have collected over $900,000 from the efforts that the collection agencies have made for us.
And just a question on that, what about other areas like the airport and other, you know, entities within the city's umbrella? What are we doing with them? Are we engaging collection agencies?
Absolutely. What we're doing is we're looking at collections on a citywide basis now. So, each department, we're looking at the highest accounts receivable balances, and we're focusing on those divisions first, or those departments. That's why the Finance Department, the General Accounts Receivable, and the Water Departments are being looked at immediately. Aviation, the Commitment Center is also on our, in our target.
Great.
In July, or I'm sorry, in October of 2014, we brought forward new collection agency contracts to the council, and they were approved. There are a number of contracts that we put into place, because what we found was that collection agencies tend to focus and specialize in the type of debt that they collect. So, a collection agency that focuses on library collections won't necessarily be responsible or be concerned about the collection of taxes. As you can see, the collection agencies also charge a lot of different charges, a lot of different percentage rates, starting at 12.5% and going up to 33% for legal services. Which brings us to the cost for the collection agencies. For that $900,000 that we've collected since last March, we've paid about $120,000 in expenditures to those collection agencies. Oops, went too fast. That brings us to some cost-saving solutions that we'd like to discuss today. We would like to go get your approval to move forward with the chargeback of collection costs to our delinquent customers. And those costs relate to the lien charges that we have and also to the contracted percentages that the collection agencies are charging. To do that, we would need to update city code to allow for the recovery of documentation and lien processing fees. and to hold the debtor liable for all expenses incurred by the city to collect those delinquent charges.
Councilman Waring.
Thank you.
So this includes, you said ambulance fees?
That's correct.
I think that was earlier in your.
Emergency transportation services.
I mean, people should pay their bills, of course. Obviously, that's a little bit different than you're not paying taxes or something that you owe. Right now, we're just collecting what is owed, and not the costs we're incurring to try to collect it.
That's correct.
I think I said that correctly.
Yep.
So what you're asking us to support today, if I was to characterize it, it's basically getting the people who owe the city money to pay the fees that the rest of us taxpayers are incurring to hire someone to collect effectively what the rest of us are paying voluntarily in a timely fashion.
That's correct.
We're using better technologies to do it, more updated, more efficient, which really even helps the people we're trying to collect from. I mean, see my point earlier about, you know, you gotta make extra calls and talk to more people, which of course then boosts their costs, because they gotta hire people to deal with calls that didn't need to be made in the first place. I mean, I guess for the ambulance thing, going back to that, or the emergency service, is there, I mean, what kind of bills are we talking about? Do you have, I mean, you probably have a list in front of you of the individuals who owe money, who have, but I mean, what kind of range are we talking about?
The average amount for the emergency transportation services is about $800. And I want you to understand that going through this process, the emergency transportation folks give a year for people to work through this process to pay. These are people that just plan out, do not pay. We also offer payment plans. And for a year, you can take any kind of debt that you owe, and we do this for tax customers also. You can set up a payment plan and pay that amount off over time.
I guess my concern is 50-year-old man and woman, a single mother, or something, has three kids, has a heart attack, has to get transported, can't work, hasn't paid the bill to this, you know, now they haven't been working in a year or something. I'm just, I understand, a payment plan might not even help, that they got bigger concerns that they owe us $800. That's just a little, that's, you know, it is slightly concerning. That's been brought to my attention. You said that there's payment plans that could be worked out. I mean, how generous of the plan. Do we have people who still, like, can't do it, and then what happens then? Do we just keep hitting them with calls and letters, or emails, or whatever?
Mr. Chairman, Councilman Waring, I think our intent, of course, is to is to collect as soon as we possibly can. But we're looking to make amicable payment arrangements, something that everybody can live with. I think in the case of ambulance collections, for example, I think the difficulty is not hearing from them. We don't hear from you. We've made every attempt. We're willing to work out payment plans. We're willing to take into account special circumstances and considerations. But in the absence of that, that's when we're much more likely to use a collection agency to collect those funds. There's tens of millions of dollars outstanding as it relates to our ambulance services. And I think we have to aggressively pursue those in order to just increase our cash flow.
I understand, I think you shouldn't, you know, the rest of us can't own that, but that is just a little bit different than
Understood.
I mismanage my money, or I just don't want to pay, or whatever. Okay, I think I'm satisfied, thank you. Let me ask you this, so how many people do you not hear back? Just in general, take the ambulance part out of it. How many people you try to contact, like, "Hey, you owe us some money," and you just don't hear from at all? I mean, I think every person watching this probably at some point who's ever loaned money to a friend or so, probably had that experience.
The number's in the thousands. And that's why the Fire Department was able to send over about 22,000 accounts last year to the debt set-off program.
The 22,000 just for the ambulance?
Just for ambulance.
Wow, holy cow. So 22,000 just for the ambulance, and I assume we can extrapolate from that, that it's 50,000 or 100,000 individuals we're talking about overall, for all collections? I mean, 22,000 is a pretty hefty.
Right. Mr. Chairman, Councilman Waring, I think
Or is that repeat people? Hopefully, you're not having too many ambulance trips, but.
Right, the 22,000 accounts likely for 22,000 individual trips, obviously. And as it relates to other tax accounts, they're significantly lower in volume, because we have about 60,000 business licenses in Phoenix. So it's a lower number.
The 22,000, definitely, I hadn't had that number before that I remembered. And that's the number of people you're just not hearing back from?
Correct. And the debt is not sent anywhere to debt service or to a collection agency unless it's a year old.
And you're confident this will, so we'll just start with the 22,000. With better techniques, new technology, you're thinking you will be able to get responses from more of those people?
Absolutely.
Do you have any idea, half, or a third more?
I don't think we have that information, but I can tell you that the Fire Department does not have collection staff. So after that year of period, and the reason it takes so long is because they're working with insurance companies, they're working with Medicare, they're working for anybody to try to be able to pay that bill. So these are the people that just have not paid or have not contacted us. We may have a bad phone number, we could have a bad address. Collection agencies have those tools in place of the resources that we don't.
So if I go on this route, we're just confident they're going to be able to get in touch with people we can't get in touch with?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Noakowski.
So what is our write-off rate on bad debt?
I can tell you that the recovery rate right now for the collection agencies, the legal firms that are working for tax for me right now, is about 9% return. For the water accounts, because the population is different and the customers are different, it's about 4%.
Do you happen to know what the standard or the norm is for a city?
For, I believe it's around 5. So I'm very happy with the return that we've received from our legal firms, because they are definitely
Now, the other thing I was going to ask you is, we wait until a year to send it to collections, huh?
We wait for a year, only for the fire, for the ambulance billings.
And the other accounts, what's the norm for?
The other accounts, we just went through the large cleanup, so the accounts had not been sent. What we're trying to do now is get down to about the 120-day mark.
120 days, all right. And then the other thing is, I know that we use collection agencies, and we're looking at anything from 12% to about 33%, including the legal services. Have we ever looked into maybe keeping it in-house, having a base salary for those employees, and then giving them a percentage of whatever they bring in, like a commission? And basically, it drives them to go out there and collect more. I mean, that's how we work it in the radio industry, is that we actually have an in-house agency, and that account executive is actually in charge of going after bad debt, and they keep a percentage of the bad debt that they bring in. Have we ever looked into that? I will.
Mr. Chairman, Councilman Noakowski, we have not looked at providing a commission structure to the employees. I think overall, our staff are doing probably a pretty good job at collecting the low and medium-hanging fruit, and that certainly is our lowest cost of collection. Beyond that, though, once taxpayers are ignoring our communications, that's when we move to the collection agencies. But the direct answer to your question is no, we have not considered a commission structure.
I think, I'd like to look into that, maybe creating an in-house, if it'll be affordable or not, or if it's a savings or not, and actually start that whole process at 30 days, and then 60 days, and then 90 days, threatening to actually send it to a collection agency that happens to be our own collection agency. Even with the buyer waiting a year, most people move, their financial situation changes. I think we should look at a policy of 120 days, the max, and coming up with some type of a payment plan, if it's $25 a week, or a month, or whatever. But at least they're giving something. And once they miss that, then we send them to a collection agency or so. But I think that we can actually bring it down to less than 5% of bad debt if we, I mean, write-offs, right?
Mr. Chairman, Bridget McBride of the Law Department wanted me to make sure that I remind council that it's against city code and charter to write off any debt owed to the city. So what winds up happening is over some period of time, you know, certain debts are clearly not going to be recovered. Collection efforts may stop on those, but they may not be written off. Any debt in excess of $50,000 has to be approved by council in order to write off. Bridget, is there anything else that you would?
Even over, even under $50,000.
Requires?
The city charter, I believe does not allow even council to write off that debt, that it's just within the city charter. That if anybody, taxpayer or otherwise, owes a city debt, it might go into an uncollectible account, but it just kind of sits there. And if we have a lien on that piece, on a property they may own, even 30 years from now, the city will recoup its debt.
So even if that person passes away, owns, has no living relatives, no property, nothing, that just stays on our books forever?
Correct.
That doesn't sound right.
It's one of the challenges when we get requests about, for example, parking fines,
Right.
that a normal business would probably have written them off long ago, but because of our provision, we carry those through. My guess is that the charter is just contemplating that someone who owes the cities, owes all of us, we're all the city, shouldn't have a way out of that, that we all need to pay what we owe to each other, I would guess would be the rationale.
But please be assured that we're not spending any effort going after the dead accounts. I mean, we call them dead accounts, but ironically, some of the people in that list have indeed passed away. They were in an automobile accident, they destroyed some city property. There's a lien placed against them at some point, and then ultimately, that person passed away. There's no collection effort there.
And my last comment is, having a centralized AR, I mean, it's great. I think that we should have everyone centralize all their accounts receivables, and we should really do it as a unified force, with collection agencies, if it's in-house, out, or whatever. So I compliment you. I know that we're looking at technology, how can we use it to its fullest? And with us providing with their new technology coming into the City of Phoenix, that if we can look for softwares that can actually connect departments, especially when it comes to AR issues, that we should really look into that now, that we're at the basis of developing something, right?
Mr. Chair, Councilman Noakowski, I think it's important to note, this subcommittee has been a leader in this, and pushing this effort for five years at least, that I'm aware of, that collections is important, because in the case of a taxpayer, they've collected taxes from customers that they have not given to the city, so it's not their money to hold on to. So that's why at some point we do this. You all have been pushing us. Neil and Sandra have really, this debt set-off program is something we hadn't really done before, because of their knowledge of how the state system works. It's been a good program, but I think it's an example of something that's been a priority for this committee, and we'll continue to report to you on how we're refining that. And we can come back with further discussion about the questions of accounts receivable and time periods and whatnot.
And the ways I was talking about using it in-house. For example, at our radio stations, we use the receptionist. When there's downtime, she has a list at her desk, or he has a list at their desk that they actually do calls. If they're able to recoup that AR, or the funds, that they get a percentage of that. So it's sort of an add-on forum for revenue-driven. So there might be some departments here that we have some downtime, where we have individuals at the Water Department, at the pay station that has some downtime. And maybe we can end up thinking outside the box of how to use people's time to its fullest, and use technology, and maybe actually give them an incentive to go after some of that bad debt, and end up with some extra cash in their pocket.
Thank you, Councilman Waring.
Yeah, I'm just curious, so let's, going back to like the ambulance situation, you said you have 22,000, I guess, that have gone over to the dead. That's a bad thing to say with the ambulance, yes, sorry. Going over to the, not the dead pile, but the bad debt.
Set-off program.
So, I'm sorry.
To check, just to be clear, those 22,000 went to the State Department of Revenue to see if there were people who had refunds that we could collect from.
That's correct.
Will this allow us to, so you were in college in 1984 or something, and you got transported in an ambulance, you didn't pay, you left the state and moved to Cleveland, or something like that. Now you come back here, I mean, how far back are we looking, given that we never write anything off?
Ever.
I mean, so we got stuff going back since the city's inception? Is that what I'm hearing, or?
With the Fire Department's emergency transportation system, our services, I think they went back, I'm trying to think what year this is. I think they went back to 2011 and sent accounts that were from 2011 forwards.
But we're never writing off accounts?
That's correct.
So aren't all the accounts from 1984, or 1962, or however long we've had ambulances, wouldn't all those be in there as well? But they're only sending a certain amount to collections?
We're only sending a certain amount to collections because some of those accounts, like we've talked about, have been considered inactive, so they're set in a different pile.
I guess what I'm envisioning is the 1984 college student could be living in Paradise Valley in a big mansion now. I mean, people do change, it's not always for the worse, it's sometimes for the better. So, I mean, is that worth our while at all to go back, since we now apparently have this enormous pile of information going back? I guess it sounds like forever.
Right, Mr. Chairman, Councilman Waring, I think we could certainly take a look at some of those older accounts. We focus on more recent account activity, just because everybody remembers.
The fishing's better.
Right, yeah, the fishing is better. And so we can certainly look at some of the older accounts as well.
I mean, I just hope we're not spending tons of time. It sounds like we're not keeping and maintaining this enormous database if we're only going to look at the last couple of years.
I can tell you that during this final demand effort that we just had, there was an account that was worth about $5,000 a taxpayer from 2004, and he came in with a check in his hand and paid because of the final demand.
How did he, did he just voluntarily do it, or how did this?
He got the final demand letter.
Yeah, he got what?
He got the final demand letter that will be sent to the collection, the accounts that will be sent to the collection agency.
Okay, so, so I guess maybe I, so we've got this long list. You're focusing on the more recent, but you sent it to somebody as far back as 2004, because they got the letter and came in.
Because their account was still active in our system, in our tax system.
Why would that account be still active?
Because they never called to cancel their account.
How many of those do we have, and how far back?
I think that was an exception, that far back. But it was positive.
Well, no, I mean, it's, every little bit helps. I mean, you're chipping away at this enormous pile of money. Okay, thank you, I was just curious, once we start talking about the totality of this.
Other questions, comments? So how did the collection agencies get paid?
Right now, what happens is the, on a monthly basis, the collection agencies will send us the money of the accounts that they receive. We update our systems, and then they send us a bill. So it's hitting the expense side for the city.
So, I'm sorry, so it's a percentage of what they collect?
A percentage of what they collect, that's correct.
And you said some of them are, it sounded like the recovery rates or what they charge us varies greatly. How does that work? Don't they?
What happens is because we've awarded multiple contracts, they can all say, "Here's the percentage I want to charge." So what finance is doing is we're looking at, of course, the low-cost vendors, and we're sending accounts out to them first. We're going to evaluate their performance. If they're high performers, they'll receive additional accounts.
So a concern that I have is if we're going to charge the folks that, you know, we have to go after for the collection, is there going to be a standard collection rate? Or is it going to be whatever this collection agency charged us? And if so, it's like, whoa, boy, I lucked out, I got the cheap one, track me down, or whoa, the real expensive guy's tracked me down. How are you going to handle that?
When the accounts are assigned to the agencies, it's random. It's, it's based on, here's the allocation. We're going to send out $3 million. Let's split between three different agencies and try to equally send them the same amount. Depending on the amount that the, uh, you're right, the, the customer that gets sent to the lowest-cost vendors, and that's another reason we will start with the lowest-cost vendors. Because that firm, when they, when I tell them they owe me $100, they're going to add the percentage onto that. So when they make contact with the taxpayer or with the ambulance rider, they're going to be telling them, you owe me $112.
There are some, uh, collection agencies that have different levels of expertise for different types of debt, and those services just simply cost more. And certainly some legal firms that we're dealing with cost more, and they do not get the easy-to-collect contracts.
Other questions? Councilor Noakowski.
So the percentage is, so we have 12 to 33% rate that we, they, they charge as a commission or whatever for the collection. Do they charge the city of Phoenix that? Or it's not the individual that they're collecting the money from? It comes out of our pocket, right?
Mr. Chairman, Councilman Noakowski, it comes out of our pocket. And what we're looking for today is approval to move those charges onto the taxpayer.
Okay.
Other, yeah, other questions or comments? If not, I think we, we have staff, staff recommendation here. So I would certainly entertain a motion if any of my colleagues would be so inclined. Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve staff recommendation. Send this over to the full council.
All right, we have a motion and a second. So just to be clear then, um, if we vote in favor of this motion, we'd be allowing for the recovery of documentation and lien processing fees, and we'd be holding these debtors liable for all the expenses that are incurred by the city, which is definitely a change in policy, but it, it sounds like a good change in policy. So any questions about the, the motion? Yes.
One question. Maybe it's slid by me before. What about, we're not doing this while things are in dispute.
That's correct.
Right, if somebody's disputing, that wasn't me, or I don't owe that much. None of this would affect someone who's, who's saying, you know, where it's still working its way through the system.
Dispute or those that have, as you just mentioned, you know, your, your work with these, uh, with these individuals who have the debt and, you know, there are all these different payment plans. And that's a, this is a different issue that we're talking about here.
Correct.
This is a court of last resort.
Correct, absolutely. These are the people who have not responded to us in any way, shape, or form.
Yeah, and, and Vice Mayor, did you have?
No, that's, I just.
I, I, that, that's a great clarification, because my understanding and, you know, having come across some of these, is that the city really does bend over backwards. The city is very reasonable to work with. So these are kind of the worst of the worst, or just those who are simply avoiding us. They're not answering their calls. And so I think it's important for, for folks to understand that.
And the rest of us taxpayers are, are footing that bill.
Yep.
Our taxes go up a little bit, our expenses go up a little bit. We're not hiring more police because we got to cover this tab.
Yep, absolutely. Great, any other questions or discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye. Aye? All opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Great work. Thank you so much for what you're doing to help save some taxpayer dollars. Now, we are, uh, we're starting to run out of time. So we're going to handle item 10 now, the purchase card program. But item 11, I believe, if it's all right with the, the Vice Mayor, we're going to go ahead and move that on entrepreneurship to next month's meeting.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, you also, this committee's been a champion of our core process, which came out of last year's budget, which was an internal review. And one of the items that was brought forward through that was a great call for a purchase card program. And at the risk of prior city managers coming back and haunting me for the rest of my life, we wanted to bring this forward. The city has traditionally not had credit cards for obvious reasons of how no notorious credit card abuse can be in public agencies. And so the city of Phoenix has had very, very few, if any, per, uh, credit cards. Technology in, in our theme has now changed to where almost all the concerns before about how quickly you can know what somebody's doing, what they're doing with it, the way you control it, has changed. And so Neil and Denise, our Assistant Finance Director, have a, a report for you on a proposal to try getting into this world.
Thank you, Ed. Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee. Ed has described three or four of my slides, which is very good. Thank you, Ed. And we'll move, uh, move ahead very rapidly. Of course, uh, the P-card program would have a number of benefits. First of all, we would be able to have a lot of process efficiencies. Our transaction cycle time would decrease by 70%, transaction cost by 81%. And at the same time, we believe vendors will be able to do two things. One, continue to offer us discounts and possibly, number two, offer us deeper discounts for prompt payment. In addition, one of the other big benefits, aside from receiving some rebates from the bank, is that the bank would become responsible for the annual 1099 reporting. That is a big deal, and that will save us a lot of time and effort in the finance department. Uh, our friends in the vendor community, of course, they'll see some cost reductions. They won't be pursuing us to make sure they're paid. They'll receive faster payments. And of course, everyone will have a reduced fraud risk. There are a number of situations that we are involved in today where paper checks simply do not work. A police and fire emergency where we are responding to other communities. Typically, uh, paper warrants or paper checks will not work there. In addition, other domain names that we acquire, you know, .govs, et cetera, online job announcements, uh, US District Court filing fees, all of those things will not accept our warrants. So what do we do? Well, in cases where warrants will not work, we will often give someone, and for example, the fire department, a large check. They will cash that check. They will take that pile of money around with them back to New York or wherever it is that they are responding to. And they will use those funds for lodging, food, fuel, uh, to and from a scene where they're assisting.
What's our, just, uh, Mr. Young, what's our person doing there that's the employee's user?
Ah, okay.
Are they upset or excited? I can't tell.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that employee is upset because they have their own credit card. Correct. They are, they are, employees are financing us, and they are feeling it.
That's actually a good point. One thing that happens in this is we actually end up asking employees to float the city money on their credit card bill until we can cut them a check because we, we don't have it. And many of us experience that frustration, so I think that's, that's what that person's doing.
All embodied in that icon.
Isn't that amazing?
It is.
I get that he's angry or surprised. I don't even see what the rest of it's supposed to be.
It's a credit card attached to the ankle.
What's attached? The credit card is attached to his ankle? Okay, thank you for that clarification.
No problem, no problem.
You're good at this.
It's large.
I think this particular slide is a little more self-explanatory, I hope.
They're all super villain, we call them the puzzle masters.
What we see on the left side of this slide are the increasing controls that Ed has described. So the industry has matured quite a bit. Controls are much, much stronger. So controls are going up, risks are going down. So we will be able to block merchant codes. For example, if we gave the HR department, uh, a credit card so they can place ads on behalf of the city, we would block that card so it cannot be used for fuel or couldn't be used at hardware stores or things like that. In addition, we can put spend limits on the card. And so that way, we know that things could never get too far out of control. And I think the other thing that we will be doing is we'll be spending a lot of time going over the statements by department to make sure things are appropriate. Our next steps. Phase one, we're talking about establishing a pilot program for police, fire, human resources, and information technology services. We would, uh, use it for urgent, existing urgent needs, emergency events, and online transactions. Uh, we're going to measure our success by the ease of use, making sure that we have a good controlled process and any increase in revenues that may occur. From there, uh, our second phase of this will be to propose, probably in the fall, a more comprehensive payment strategy. On this slide, you can see the various, uh, payment mechanisms that we use. We would, uh, or would like to use, certainly, the purchasing card is something that in a, in a payment strategy would be used for recurring smaller dollar payments. We've already used a single-use agreement system that council authorized previously. Uh, that would be for higher dollar but less frequent transactions. And if approved by, uh, the electorate this fall, we will be able to use wire transfers for other transactions that are, uh, even larger and, uh, less frequent. Overall, this is a strategy that many, uh, governments utilize. And it certainly would make us much more efficient and help us maximize any rebates as a result of using electronic technologies. So, our recommendation. Uh, we are requesting that the Finance Efficiency and Sustainability Subcommittee recommend to full council the implementation of a P-card pilot program.
Questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilor Noakowski.
So the check and balance, would they have to go through your department, or?
Correct.
All right, and then the other thing is that, um, let's say that you have a $5,000 limit on a card, and there is an emergency and they have to, let's say, fire has to put out a big fire out in the middle of the desert or whatever. And you need to up that so they can call you and say, you know, we need our, our limit to be up to 10,000 instead of five because of the following reasons. They can call you and do that within minutes, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And we would put that new limit on, and then we would take that limit off.
All right, perfect. Sounds great.
Other questions?
Yes.
Councilman Waring. I don't know if I, I guess I'm part of the public perception. Just there have been, you know, obviously issues, it was alleged, or alluded to, excuse me, not alleged, um, about the use of the credit cards. We have talked, and Ed, I think, I've seen you do this at public meetings. You know, people have asked, do you guys have credit cards? Because of these other instances, not related to the city of Phoenix. And we have always said, we do not have the credit card. So I hate to stand in the way of efficiency or technology improvements at the efficiency in subcommittee. But I just think, I don't know. I mean, we haven't gone down this path for, for a reason, a very good reason. And it seems like, for the most part, there have been incidences, but they've served as well. There was one about washing garbage trucks, I think a couple of years ago, that, that made the paper where someone was allegedly, I'm not sure if that's been adjudicated, you know, bilking the city. But I guess overall, you're confident, to my question, that this is safer than what we're doing now.
Mr. Chairman, Councilman Waring, short answer is yes. Giving, giving out a check to be cashed, we immediately lose control the moment that check is cashed. In addition, I believe with the transparency controls that we will have available to us, the merchant codes that will be able to limit in the dollar value of those cards, I think we can make significant inroads in terms of efficiency and effectiveness. And at the same time, have a very reasonable set of internal controls that would allow us to, with a good degree of confidence, be able to manage this program.
I'm just concerned of how we're going to explain it. If a year from now, we're sitting here and there's been some incident, you seem confident that's not going to be the case. But let's face it, there's always seems to be ways around different tests or different mechanisms.
Mr. Chairman, Councilman Waring, absolutely. And the example of washing the trucks is a good one, where we didn't have cards and that type of abuse occurred.
It kept going on after the individual allegedly involved had left the city's employ. The only reason it got picked up on is its successor, you know, was, was sort of, what are we getting these bills for? We don't even wash trucks that way anymore, I believe, is what, what I was told. I think there was an article about it in the paper for people watching at home, if they want to Google it. Interesting reading. I just don't, so, like on my credit card for DirecTV or some, some service, I can have it set up so that they automatic bill, automatic bill me. Or a debit card, they automatically bill every month. Why would a debit card not be better for the rather limited scope of the top things you're talking about? A prepaid debit card or an account? You still get, I get the same receipts. I still get a tally at the end of the month. Here's what you spent money on and so forth. But at least it cuts it off to a certain amount. Are you saying with the credit card, you could also cut off a certain amount? How much it would get spent, would get spent and what the spending is for?
Correct, absolutely correct. And.
So it's kind of like a prepaid phone or something like that, in a way? I mean, you only have so many minutes or so much dollars on it.
Correct, we would limit, uh, to a reasonable amount what we would expect any type of a monthly transaction to be. We would receive reports daily from the bank as to what has transpired the previous day. We would be responsible for examining those reports to make sure that it was appropriate and consistent. But I think the best controls are the ones that we would put in place before the card is delivered to a department or an employee. And that is to ensure that we have the correct merchant codes and the correct dollar levels. After that, we have to have reasonable controls on the backend to make sure that we are reviewing any reports or any other data that is coming to our attention to make sure that our controls are effective and in place. The other thing that I know Denise is dying to point out is that the e-procurement system is going to provide a lot more transparency than what we currently have today. Denise, are there any e-procurement, uh, controls that would assist us in this?
Yes, we'll be able to monitor every transaction that these cards have, and we'll be able to do that real time. So if anything starts showing up or it looks like the activity levels are not in sync with what the card's authorized for, we'll be able to pinpoint that right away. And also, there is an approval process for these transactions on these cards. So we have that control in place. And then there's also user agreements when the cards are assigned to employees, that they will have to sign before they can use the card.
I guess, and I'm sorry to bring up the troublesome recent past. We just had an issue where, I'm not sure how to phrase this, so I guess I use the word allegedly, oh, it's not a criminal thing. You know, firefighters weren't apparently getting paid what they should have been getting paid and so forth. I mean, we have all kinds of checks and so forth you would think would address that, contracts and so forth. I think it's just one illustration. Maybe we need to update our systems there to, to make it easier, I don't know. But, uh, you know, that, that's just worrisome, given that rather recent history on something that you would think would just be an automatic. And, you know, I think we all, or a lot of us, anyway, I'm sure get direct deposit without checks. And, um, it just makes me, it just makes me a little nervous. It just does, as we, as we discussed before. So I'm still pondering. I do have a question for Councilman Gates. What's that little guy doing up on the screen right now?
He's surfing on a credit card.
Surfing on a credit card, all right. I wasn't sure with the hands out.
Which means he feels very comfortable now. He's confident.
I understand. See, I knew you would know. So I just, I didn't realize you had this expertise. I'm all in with all your other.
It's because these kids now, they communicate through the use of emoticons, right? And so you.
I just do not relate.
When your kids get older, yeah.
I'm going to bring you over so that you can actually, is this why my four-year-old is better on the computer than I am?
Yeah, absolutely.
An employee is so relieved that they're no longer floating the city on their own credit.
I've now completely forgotten what I was going to ask after that. So a question that, that I have is the, and, and I think this is, this is the key to this, is now in real time, I mean, I do this, you know, I can see where my wife had lunch at yesterday by looking at the credit card statement. I'm not the only one who does that. And so presumably, that's the type of thing that we'll be able to do here. It sounds like we're going to have more reviews going on, more people reviewing this. And that's more time, that's more city time. But on the other hand, I'm assuming right now, and not to get into the weeds, but I'm going to, you know, right now, if someone's using their own credit card, then they have to go and they have to make copies of receipts and bring them into somebody to approve them. At my other place of employment, we have a, so I have a P-card. And, uh, my purchases immediately go on to a tool. It's an American Express deal. So I don't, I don't ever have to turn receipts in. It just shows up on the tool. And I'm wondering if that's, that will be available here as well. So in other words, you know, as soon as, as soon as I make that purchase, it shows up on the system. And so if there's something on the system that's not, you know, shouldn't be charged, we would sort of immediately know. And the, the, the additional safeguard here is that if it's a merchant, merchant code that's not approved, it, the card will be rejected.
Right.
Okay, so can you talk about that a little bit? Are we still going to have to have people making copies of receipts? Because that just drives me nuts and seems sense. As the councilman's reminded us, this is the efficiency subcommittee, that we shouldn't have to be doing that, so.
That's, Mr. Chairman, there may be situations where we do have to have receipts just to make sure we got the checks and balances in place. For example, you may have to have receipts when the firemen go out. For example, you may have to have receipts when the firemen go out, but there's other situations where we can use the tools online to verify those expenditures.
Good, good. Well, I encourage us to do that as much as we can. Yes.
Sorry. I hate to belabor it, but obviously, we have the same goals right now with the current system. The current system, again, going back to the garbage truck situation, I believe that was like $60,000 a year, I think it was like five grand a month. I think that's basically, it went on for, I believe, six years, it continued after the employee allegedly responsible had left the city's employ. It also went on, it sounds like after we were no longer cleaning garbage trucks that same way. I think that's what the product we were purchasing is involved. I mean, but we had the same controls, maybe they weren't as efficient, but we were looking for the same things. Obviously, somebody somewhere was signing off, probably for an extended period of time, on a service we no longer purchased at all. I mean, apparently, they had changed the way they were cleaning the trucks. So I'm just, so we've got the card, but somebody's still just, if you take my point, they're going through the receipts and signing off on it. If it's a erroneous or fictional thing, I had a gym membership once where they were supposed to charge me $20 a month or something and they were charging $95. If that's under the threshold for the card, like if the total thing was going to be $5,000, but this was $95, how do you pick up on that? Somebody's still got to go through and say, hey, we don't do it that way anymore, or hey, that's too much money. I mean, that really hasn't changed, has it? Or am I missing something?
There's going to be situations where the, all expenditures are going to have to be approved by some level of supervisor, and then beyond that, it's going to go to the Finance Department and be monitored on that card. And then beyond that, with the procurement, we'll be able to print all kinds of reports on activities. So I would think that in one of those processes, we're going to catch any situations of.
We do all that stuff now. We just do it different. We do it with checks, we do it with, but I mean, we do all that now, and I'm just saying this, there was at least one sort of glaring example. I know it's one, but it was an expensive one.
One of the big distinctions is the collusion effect when someone is working with a third party. When someone's working with a third party outside of the city, it becomes a lot more difficult for the existing internal control structure to be effective regardless of whether you're doing things electronically or through warrants. I think in the particular situation, I would suspect whoever was approving those invoices had been approving them for a very long time. So one employee was receiving them, had worked with the third party outside of the city to share in the $5,000 a month. That invoice went to a supervisor and the supervisor got somewhat comfortable in reviewing those. And it wasn't until a new person went in that the control actually became effective. The control became effective when the new employee came on board. So those are the types of risks that exist everywhere. Every, every type of entity, every government, every private sector entity faces those types of risks when there is a, some sort of collusion going on with somebody else to circumvent controls. Because having someone else work with you to circumvent controls is a whole lot easier than trying to do it on your own. I think in this particular case, vendors ultimately are going to have to be on the vendor system. So we need to have a bona fide vendor in order to be able to utilize that card. So that is helpful. All the vendors are going to have to be, move into the e-procurement system. So I think we're narrowing the risk about as well as we can with the e-procurement system. The controls that are around the P-card are going to narrow that risk further around those electronic transactions. And quite honestly, that's, I think, the absolute best we can do.
So we're not claiming that this is, and this is not foolproof.
No. What winds up happening is when we put internal controls into place, we have to evaluate the cost of a control versus what it is we expect to receive. So what I would, you know, personally, if I had a choice, I'd have an accounts payable person to look at every single transaction even before it occurred. You know, we would have, if we had a small army of people, that would be much more effective. Instead, what we've done is we've put other mitigating controls into place, having to do with segregation of duties, having to do with other electronic means and editing data. E-procurement is going to be a very large mitigating control that helps us reduce the cost of our control system, yet at the same time enhance its effectiveness. And likewise, the controls around the procurement card are going to further enhance those controls that we'll see in the e-procurement system as well.
I think just to summarize, which, what we're saying is the chief financial officer and his staff have assessed the risk and they, and I concur, they believe that the risk is so far mitigated that this is worth, on a six-month trial, trying it and assessing what are, if there are things that we haven't thought of that we see, but we are comfortable as staff saying that the risks are mitigated to where we think it is worth the, worth the risk. But it isn't, it's, nothing is risk-free and this, we shouldn't, we're not trying to pitch this as being risk-free.
Other comments? And I would emphasize the fact that this is a pilot program. I think it's important because it is a new step. And so with that, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion? I don't have a second. All right, I will second the item then. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
No.
All right, motion passes two to one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and that takes us to a call to the public, and we do have a card from Greta Rogers. Ms. Rogers?
Can I just sit here?
You may.
Because most everyone's gone home.
You bet.
And I'll keep this very brief because I know you're running late.
You bet.
Basically, I commend you as a subcommittee on finance. This is an 180-degree sea change from what this committee was a couple of years ago and prior, and I've come to many finance subcommittee meetings over the years. We are at a point in this city where we can fund essentials only. I've said this before, essentials in capital letters. No I-wants that are not essential. I don't care what it is or how politically wonderful it will be for any one of you individuals or the other five that serve with you. We are in a state of more abundity as far as the economy in the city and state are concerned. We're treading water and it isn't going to change for five, probably even 10 years. This isn't a little recession we're going through. This is a depression. I don't care what anybody calls it, it's a depression. And we are lower than the national average in all measurable improvements in the economy. And that's not going to change either. So let's fund essentials as required by the charter and options are off the table. And we will be able to get out of this and sometime the growth will come back. It won't be like it was when Tyroes were growing out of the desert like mushrooms after the rain. We have to be frugal and we have to say to the I-wants, no. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate those comments. Future agenda items? Passing out the future agenda items to my colleagues here? We've got several items in the future. Any others that my colleagues think we ought to be adding? All right, well, with that then, this meeting is adjourned.